Oops, I guess I should turn all my sound effects off.
No.
Oh, it's so hard to know. Are we, is this an item on our agenda tonight? Oh, no.
Dr. Bruce, there was an email that was sent.
That's, I only got like a moment into it, so I haven't, I didn't have time to read it all.
We get rained on tomorrow.
Okay. Like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, December 4th. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please pause for a moment to remember Brendan Reagan, Mary Beatle, and our 41st President George H. W. Bush. Please be seated. And if we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Albers.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Poe Tim Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Presentation, City Manager.
Excuse me, we have two presentations. The first one, oops.
We have two presentations this evening. The first one, both of them will be Southern California Edison. And the first one is on their annual propane gas safety, public awareness. And we have Tracy.
Here. Deggman.
Deggman.
We got it here.
There it is.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tracy Deggman. I'm from Southern California Edison. And I'm here tonight to give our annual presentation on propane gas safety. So with that, what I'll be covering tonight is basically everything that you find in our gas safety brochure. There's a handful of them over on the table if anyone wants to take one at the end. We'll cover some general system information, dig alert, when to call, customer responsibilities, gas leaks, and how to recognize them and what to do if you have a gas leak, contact numbers, and our website. So here at Catalina, we deliver a propane gas, propane air gas mixture, which is supplied through a pipeline system. We are regulated from our own standards as well as the state and local and federal governments. We, we do routine patrols of our gas line pipeline system. We do visual ground inspections, conduct leak surveys, cathodic protection surveys. We have a pressure monitoring system that runs 24 hours and records. Our cathodic protection is also on the lines to help protect against corrosion. And we routinely monitor that. So we basically have two types of pipelines on the island. We have our mains and our service lines. A main pipeline usually is just that, the main pipeline that runs down the middle of the road in front of your businesses and homes. And then our service pipelines are the ones that would run from the mains to your homes and businesses. A main pipeline can sometimes be marked by a sign on the side of the road. I think along Pebbley Beach Road, there's one present. It looks very similar to the one in the picture. It'll indicate the general location of the pipeline, contact information for Edison. And the one thing it doesn't provide is depth or how deep the line is, where exactly it is. So because of that, it's very important that whenever you're doing any kind of a project or excavation, that you call Dig Alert. Even including in your own home property, if you're planning any kind of a project, you'll want to call Dig Alert ahead of time. It takes two days before you can start your project, but a utility representative will come out and mark any pipelines that are on your, on your property. So they'll line out the route for you. That way, when you're digging, you're clear and safe. Planning a tree, building a fence, anything that you might be digging for could potentially hit a pipeline. So it's very important that you make sure you do that call. When you do your excavation, you're going to want to start with hand tools until you locate the pipeline. If you, if you accidentally scrape or gouge or dent any of the pipelines, it's also very important to make sure you call Edison at the number located on the bottom there, And someone will come out to inspect the pipeline to make sure that if there is any damage, we repair it and take care of it to prevent any future leaks or failures. So this next slide shows a diagram of a meter. And what this is showing is the utility responsibility versus the customer responsibility. So anything coming up out of the ground, up through the meter set, and up to the service delivery point pipe on the top there is Edison responsibility. But anything leading away from that pipe into your home, into your business, is customer responsibility. And what that means is, just like we're responsible for inspecting our pipelines, it's very important that the customer has their pipelines inspected as well for corrosion or damage to prevent any leaks or failures. Let's see. Any plumbing, well, most plumbing and heating services over here can come out and locate that pipeline, do the inspection, make recommendations, and possibly even do the repair work, too. You should also make a habit of testing your gas appliances. We're going into the winter season, so furnaces are coming back on. It's always a good idea to just test it, make sure your pilot lights are lit properly, clean stove tops to make sure that the burning, you know, combust properly. See what else. On your property where you know you have a pipeline route or even where your meter sets are, it's very important to keep those areas clear in case there ever is an emergency. You know, you want to make sure that the utility personnel are able to get to the pipeline or the meter that is needing attention. So don't store anything near or on those routes or build a fence over it or anything like that. If you have any other questions regarding your system or your service, again, you can call the customer service number listed there and for turn-ons, turn-offs, or any other customer responsibility questions you might have. So how to recognize a propane gas leak? Propane is odorless and colorless, so we add a chemical odorant to help people identify gas leaks. It smells like rotten egg, sulfur. I'm sure most of us here dealing with propane have probably smelt it at least once or twice. Let's see. Other ways that you could possibly see a leak is maybe if there's a white cloud or a mist, sometimes a hissing noise coming out of a pipe or in the area. If it's a flooded area, you may see bubbling, dead, dead plants around a pipeline could indicate that there's a leak. Or the giveaway flames coming from the ground or a pipeline, you might have a problem. So propane is different than natural gas in that natural gas tends to rise where propane is heavier than air, so it's going to settle. So those are typically areas where you might sense or smell a gas leak versus, you know, basements or underground crawl spaces, that kind of thing. So if you suspect a leak, the number one thing, just get out of the area and warn others to keep away. Don't try to open the doors or ventilate. And if you're already outside, walk into the wind away from the gas. Don't use, if you're in the area of the leak, do not use your phone, do not turn on light switches. All of those are considered ignition sources. So just get out of the area first. If you, if you see a gas cloud over a piece of equipment or an appliance, don't try to go turn it off. Just vacate the area and let the, you know, fire department or Edison take care of it. Once you are in a safe place, call 911. And then if you could also call Edison after you've called 911, provide a description of the leak and its location. And then stay out of the way so you don't get hurt. Safety's our priority. If you have any other questions, you could call the customer service line or visit our website at www.se.com/catalina. That service number up there goes directly to our Catalina service. So they're familiar with, you know, the fact that we have gas and water here as well as electricity. And any other emergencies, call 911.
Great.
And that's it. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I have one question, though, because I remember hearing, because it's getting cold now and people would turn on their ovens for heat.
That is not recommended.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's one of the things we're supposed to advise people not to use ovens or stove tops for heating purposes.
Right.
It's not a good idea. If you're out of the room and it blows out, then you have gas just pouring into a room. So that's not a good idea.
Okay.
So Tracy, so what we're saying about this propane gas, do we have any natural gas or is it just all propane on the island?
We have a propane air mixture.
But it's not natural?
But it is not natural gas, no.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you here.
See you next year, however many times.
Our next presentation is also Southern California Edison, I believe Frank Beach. Or Luke, are you talking or Frank? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, City Manager, for the opportunity to present the water update. And community, and to the community, we thank you for your ongoing efforts in conserving our precious resource. I'm Luke Shaner, Project Manager for Southern California Edison, supporting Catalina operations. And with me Frank Beach, Production Supervisor of Water and Gas. I'd like to go over water use trends on the island. This graphic we prepared with a focused look on water use within the system. This represents monthly water demand on the island. The blue is this month, this year. The red is last year. And what's important to note that since March, we, both last year and this year, we've been in a stage one conservation. What you see from this graph is this year we see higher use, water use, as opposed to last year on average, for the whole year, it's about 13% higher. November was about 11% higher. So we want to take this opportunity to remind everyone to continue to be vigilant in your conservation efforts. And, you know, feel free to reach out to us if there are questions, customer service, so that we can continue to engage and educate if need be. What we've also added to this chart is leveraging what the chamber does on a monthly basis by publishing visitor counts. So the trend lines you see are total visitors, a summation of harbor, ferry, cruise ship, airport, and helicopter visitors, just to help us understand different areas that may or may not tax the water system. But what's interesting, what we saw this, when year by year comparison here, is that overall this year compared to last year, visitor counts are relatively consistent. However, water use is higher. Are there, I'll move forward unless there are questions from you on this slide. Next, we wanted to present the current reservoir level in Middle Ranch. This is based on a level on December 3rd, so we were able to measure it since this last rainfall. The current level is 523.8 acre feet. This month, we saw the lowest measurement of 521 acre feet. So through this recent rainfall, we did hit a stabilization point and then slight increase, which is a positive sign. And, you know, hopeful that with consistent continual rain, there could be that expectation of a continued rise in reservoir level. This is the same graphic that was shared last year at council in August. We have been, based on the forecast conditions, with assumptions in the table below for reservoir drawdown, annual reservoir drawdown, annual D cell production of hitting 300 acre foot level, which is a stage two trigger in the summer of 2020. In August, it was trending for July, and now it's June. And that's just consistent with the, you know, less beneficial environmental conditions compared to baseline considerations, and then slightly less D cell production and higher use than, than conditions. Are there any questions on this graphic before I move on?
So Luke, you're essentially doing a rolling average, right? That you update the projection as new information comes in. And so we, it looks to me, because I seem to recall that originally we were talking stage two for August or September of 2020, and I think you bumped it back a couple of months.
It's accelerated a couple of months, so August.
Okay, accelerated. That's, that's more accurate to say. Yeah, so the concern I have is when you look at how, how much we pulled out of the reservoir, we really did 170 acre feet in a year. And if you subtract that back from the 521 that we're at now, or 523, we got a little bit of rain, that puts you at 350, which makes me start to get kind of nervous. That's in a year. That's 2019. So I'm not, I, I'm not sure what other assumptions you're using that stretches out to the following year. So I, my request would be just that you go back and talk amongst yourself and, you know, really look at the numbers again, because I think it's pretty safe to say that rationing fatigue has set in. And maybe we need to be a little more conservative and start planning than in fact, we're looking at stage two at the end of next year, not 2020.
I would also add to that extremely valid points, but also we are not seeing both D cell units being used or, and I realize in January, we're, that's not necessary, but during the months that it is necessary, we're, we're not seeing that double production happening as we had intended for D cell two to be used.
Right, and I think just a response to that is, you know, as operations continues to operate D cell production to the maximum potential for a, you know, long-term steady state. And so there may be, there's those instances where a short-term maximum isn't recognized in the data. But what we're seeking to accomplish is a, an increased maximum steady state production out of the system. And we've noted the concerns, and we'll continue to look at the data. And the positive is that this is updated based on actual conditions monthly, so it does provide that opportunity to calibrate it.
And again, I really appreciate that you're sharing this with the community and with us. I think the idea is we're going to work together, make sure we don't have any surprises, that we're planning ahead, that we sound the, you know, conservation alarm a little more seriously so that we have enough water. That's the goal, right? We want it to make it through a season, a summer season.
Is there any plan to operate in fact series, the two plants?
I'm not, I'm, I don't have that information right now.
There could be some useful information to find out what the plan is.
I think I could just go back to my previous statement that operations is weighing many factors and looking to achieve consistent maximum steady state production out of the D cell system.
And I, I think what's hard is, I think what's hard is to look at the data that's readily available to anybody in the community and go, well, okay, so in October, we use 23.75 acre feet out of the reservoir. And in the winter months where we have the capability to produce enough D cell water to suit the needs of the community, it's hard to go out there, someone like myself, to explain to the community, well, why are we pulling from the reservoir at all? So whatever.
Well, Hamilton, although, I mean, Hamilton just, is not connected to the D cell.
Right, but.
System, but that's generally about 10.
But it's so minimal right now. I mean, their occupancy is minimal right now. So it, I, I think, I'm at least looking for the actual, our operations are this, and I'm looking for tangible bullet points that I can share with the community to help somebody understand, well, here's another 23 acre feet in four months' time. That's 100, you know, 100 acre feet. And that's just hard when we're in the winter months to think, well, what's going to happen when we're, you know, pulling 300,000 gallons a day from the reservoir? So that's all. I just, I mean, I appreciate your, your, your position and what you're sharing, but we, we've known for four years that we've been in stage rationing now that this is operations. It just doesn't, we just need more.
Madam Mayor, Council, Frank Beach, just, I, let me address a couple items. Currently, Plant Two is in operation, which is our max production for D cell water. What, what I want to convey is Plant Two is the highest and most efficient resource that we have for desalination water. It runs very, very hard from, say, March to end of September, beginning of October. It has to come down for maintenance. And bringing that plant down for maintenance, we then put on Plant One, which was the original plant. Years ago, Plant One used to be able to handle the consumption of Avalon. Currently, it is not. So even with Plant One in operation, we're pulling water from Wrigley. We've gone through some maintenance procedures for October and November, and Plant Two is back in operation. We've made some adjustments in the system to not pull any water from Wrigley Reservoir into town other than, you know, what goes, goes over to Hamilton, so that we can maximize production out of D cell Plant Two in the winter months, whereas before, we couldn't really do that. In January, we're going to foresee some more maintenance to Plant Two because we need to have that 100% ready to go come springtime because it's going to run in full operation up until next October. So there is a difference in the output of each plant. And right now, for example, if Plant Two's on for a month, you'll probably see Plant Two being almost adequate to keep up with the consumption of the town. When we go to Plant One, that's where we have the difference. So obviously, in the summer months, the consumption goes up. But that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. It's due to Plant Two just being operated at a maximum capacity for spring and summertime months.
Well, it wouldn't really make sense to run Plant Two in the winter months because Plant Two, you can't really regulate how much water you're making out of it, whereas you've got the trains with Plant, Plant One, so you can better focus on producing just what's needed.
Right. We have the ability right now, because Plant Two was out of operation and maintenance, we're running Plant One, now we can set the reservoir levels and run Plant Two for a while. So we're going to pick up on our consumption here in town and not pull as much water from Wrigley Reservoir. And that will last up until, you know, however, depends on the, the demand of the city. But then we'll go back to Plant One for a while.
So what's the downtime for maintenance roughly? A month, two months, you know? It varies?
It does vary. You know, when you see the summation of our, our daily totals and what we're doing, you might see blocks of three or four days where it looks like the plant is not in operation. It does not mean the plant is off. The plant could be up and running. We have, you know, parameters of our permit that are given to us by the state where produced water may not be able to go into town. So there's all that criteria where you might just look at this, the data sheet and it says, well, it's been off for three, four days. And it's not really the case. And often our maintenance, you know, has to do with, it's not simple items. It's, you know, we're taking pumps apart, we're taking the vessels apart. And whenever Plant One or Plant Two goes down, it takes virtually a day, sometimes a day and a half, just to bring that back up so that water can go into town, which looks like it's just sitting there off, and that's not really the case. So there's a lot, some of the maintenance projects out there, just due to the corrosive nature of seawater, it's labor intensive, really is. Any further questions?
Is there more to the presentation? Do you have more presentation?
This one? Okay. I'll briefly go through this. You know, I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, obviously, we're in stage one. And yeah, I know, we've been in stage one for, forever. But, you know, last time we were here in August, we, we kind of said we were going to have staff, do some patrolling, just kind of give an indication of, of maybe some violations of stage one conservation. And so what the chart represents is in October, we had a total of nine. In November, there was a total of 11. And these violations, if you want to call them, are for various, like overspray, watering at different times, small in nature, some broken plumbing fixtures and what have you. But I just want to let you know that we're out there. All these have been verbal warnings up to this point. And there's been one, one resident that actually fixed his structure, a broken structure on a verbal warning, so that's good. But I just wanted to let you know that we're out there, we're doing this. With the consumption in town being up from last year, we're probably going to advance on our patrolling and start authorizing some written violations, kind of a first offense, just, just to get people thinking that, hey, we, we need to conserve some more water because we're, we're consuming a lot versus last year. And just to remind everybody, some of the, the simple water conservation requirements for stage one, you know, if you're going to water your vehicle, you need to have a shut-off nozzle. And that goes for boats, planes, whatever, whatever you're watering. You're not allowed to water down your driveway sidewalk with potable water. If you're irrigating with the hose, it needs to have a shut-off, automatic shut-off nozzle. You can use a bucket, drip irrigation's fine. We have things, as, you know, the hotels are required to give the, their patrons the option of laundering their, their linens, saving water that way. The restaurants are supposed to issue a lot of water. And the watering times for Pacific Standard Time right now are from six to eight and seven to nine. And then when we go into daylight savings time, it's five to seven, seven to nine P.M. Excuse me, six to eight P.M. on the, on our current Pacific Standard Time. So just to hit a few of those, and, you know, the good news is we did get some rain. Very thankful about, we've had two episodes of that. The reservoir level did go up, which is very positive. And how I see that is with what little rainfall we've had, you know, the first couple downpours, the ground soaks everything up, and you don't really see a result. After the last one, the reservoir did come up a little bit, which means if we could somehow get some more rain, potentially that reservoir is going to come up. And that's, that's just a positive, you know, so I just want to throw that out there.
I have a couple of things. Did Edison remove the water restrictors from all those places that had the?
From what I understand, not 100% of them.
Okay.
Yours will be removed this week.
I think mine already was. No, so, so Ron hooked me up, there's this, the company that has, it's an app you put on your phone. And I think he was going to try to put it in the Edison house, in his home, and then he put one in my home. So they had to remove the restrictor, I think, to get it in there. So it's an app on your phone, and if you have a water leak at all, it tells you that it's leaking and it can shut, and then you can have your, with the phone, you can shut off your water. You can also, when the grandson takes a shower, we said, oh, he used so many gallons of water. When I washed a little wash, it was 43 gallons of water, and, and one was 43 and one was 38, so I need a new washing machine. But, but it's, but it's, it's a very cool thing. But I was wondering about the restrictors, because I know when they had them, it seemed like there was an urgency to get them off. And then, but a lot of us said, well, just leave them on, what's the diff? But, so that's good to know that some of them are on. But it was also interesting in this app, because I don't know where it's made, based on a family of three, I'm allowed to have some incredible amount of gallons a day, different than what comes out of when you tell us how much we need for a family of two. And I don't know if that thing's geared because people have freshwater toilets. And so it accommodates the freshwater toilet use as well or something. So, but I told my husband, no, we really don't have 240 gallons a day to use.
I was just introduced to that device.
240, yes.
I was just introduced to that device today.
Uh huh.
I looked at the brochure, the literature, it looks, it's state-of-the-art looking, I was impressed that it comes up on your phone, it's internet-based, from, from, from your desk, anywhere, you can turn your water on, off, you know? So it's, it's, it was pretty impressive. It is installed at, at the company house.
Oh, is it, did it get installed? Okay.
Recently installed, so we don't have much data on it, but I'm very curious, because, like I said, today was my first introduction to it, and it, it, it looks like it'll be some, some good stuff.
Andy, do you know how much it is?
I, I think he said if this experiment goes well, they were going to have 50, 50 units on a grant program, and that would cut it down. I think what the expense is, more than anything, is, I mean, the Edison general, the, well, not, the people from Flow are the ones that installed it, but it took them about two and a half hours. So if you're hiring a plumber, it, that could get a little costly, so, but once, once the bugs are worked out. But it was interesting, because when I was on vacation, my husband said it showed that there was a leak, and he went, went around the house, and it was a leak in the faucet that dripped every beep, I mean, and a long time before the next beep, and he went around, and he, it was the faucet, and then everything just turned off the alarm, and so it alerts you. So if you're, especially for all these people with vacation rentals, if you have a busted pipe, I mean, it's very important to have something like this, so.
I agree. I agree. I look forward to seeing how it performs.
Yes. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Luke.
I have, I have one last question, the grants. I know it's out of your control, but have you heard anything from Water Resources as to what's happening?
We have not heard anything. As soon as we do, we will report to city staff if it's in the interim. We have several calls and emails into them.
Okay. Frustrating for you, frustrating for us, yeah.
Too much so.
Well, we thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
One more question. On you guys, when's the last time we saw these guys? Did they hear a couple of months ago, or?
I believe in August, and, oh, that's a good thing. They have requested if they could come quarterly to do a water report unless there's some new changes that need to be, and so, that's my understanding, correct, Frank?
I would kind of like to see them come a little, at least a couple of times early, every two months, a little more update on it since we're having, we're still in this drought thing, if possible. If you guys can do that, instead of coming in quarterly every four months, maybe every two months, or?
So council member, if you recall, when we were in Stage Two, we did come a lot more regularly on a monthly basis, and since we're in Stage One, we've kind of dropped off. So as discussed with the city manager, we do plan on coming quarterly, and if there's any changes with data or any new information, we definitely will increase the frequency. And knock on wood that we move into a different stage, but we can have that discussion at that point. But we will come quarterly and provide you with information. The other thing, too, is that we do provide the desal production data on a monthly basis, as well as the middle ranch reservoir level on a monthly basis, so you do have that information on a monthly basis as well, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to come over here? I'd love to see him, I'd love to see him a little more, but.
Excuse me, if you'd come to the podium, yes.
Paul Patterson, 221 Whitley. One of the council people, you talked about drought fatigue, and I recall that the last time Edison was here, it was about to inform us of rate increases, and the reason we had rate increases is because we out-conserved the water that was asked of us, so we were asked to conserve so much water, and we conserved even more than the water we were asked to conserve, and therefore, according to the Public Utilities Commission, they didn't meet their goals as far as what their income was going to be. I mean, that's why I understood it, correct me if I'm incorrect, but now we're seeing three water increases for, you know, what we're going to pay for water bills for the next year. So I, I think that contributes to water fatigue, that's the way I see it. I mean, what is the incentive to conserve if our bills are going to go up, you know, repeatedly because we're conserving? It's a catch-22 sort of thing, that's the way I see it. And I may have understood it incorrectly, I just wanted to bring that up.
We're going to discuss that at the next meeting because I, I think that there's, it's a very complicated way that the, the state regulates public utilities and privately-owned utilities that effectively are public utilities, like Edison, but I think all of us have to get in the mantra that we are conserving in order to have water, not that we're conserving to save money.
I think that's a good way to look at it, but it's.
Because unfortunately, between their fixed cost and the guaranteed profit that they're given under, by the state, we are kind of locked into some of those.
It is, and it's a hard mind, you know, that we're doing it for our own good, but it's going to hit our pocketbooks in the long run. It's weird.
Right. But the request for those, that increase has not even been filed yet, so there's still work to be done on that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
It's filed tomorrow.
Okay. We shall move on to announcements and written communications.
I'd like to announce that the city and city council have received four written communications, three regarding number eight on tonight's agenda, and one regarding the new bonds conditions.
Great, thank you.
I have some announcements, Mayor, just to let the public know that we'll be having a public hearing at the December 18th meeting, which starts at 5:00, and that will, regarding the medical cannabis delivery permit. And letters have been sent to residents, we've had a few typos, so we're on another notice, so it's on December 18th meeting.
Okay.
And today, we had a bee expert come, he was from the Long Beach Beekeepers Association, and he went around town, went to the businesses that we've received complaints from, observed the bee situation, and visited a couple hives, and then he, his preliminary thing was that he didn't see that there was any significant issues just from the bees that he saw in the businesses, and that he'll be coming back to visit us in the springtime when the population might grow.
Were those indigenous bees?
I don't have a written report from them yet, so.
Okay.
I didn't speak with them, this is all from staff that took them around town and introduced them to some of the businesses.
Okay, great.
And then, just one last announcement, just for the public to know, that tomorrow, the city staff, department heads, and the council will be receiving AB 1234 Ethics Training.
Okay. Department head reports, who would like to start?
I'll go with this quick, you know?
Because he knows he'll be back here later, so.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, good evening. We've got lots of irons in the fire right now, many projects to be delivered very soon. So, and then also, we had Public Works worked in collaboration with community services staff to install the Christmas decorations just recently, and a shout-out to community service staff for all the improved displays that you see out there. Really put a good effort in to make them so that it looks nice. Another storm is coming tonight, this one may yield that more rain that we're talking about. Hopefully, it will. It depends on how that low kind of drops in that's over the ocean here, and it's supposed to be in the inner waters. You'll notice there's new keypads, if you're on the outside doors here, and that was, it's at the exterior of the city council doors here. That was an extremely cost-effective solution to the security improvements that we discussed during budget. So we delivered those, I don't have the exact number of dollar amount, but it was, you know, not thousands, it was hundreds of dollars to do it. And so the next two doors are on the rear of the building, so we're trying those out, making sure that everything works, but right off the bat, it looked like it worked well, so you'll be able to do the city prox card that we have here, or you'll be able to use a keypad with your number that would be off the prox card. So that would also allow us to know who's entering an exit at the building at certain times, and have a more secure situation, and we'll get rid of our keys, so that we don't have to issue keys.
So I can no longer say I have a key to the city?
No. You probably always have.
I guess I'm hanging it around my neck or something.
Okay, that's what I have tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Far as the harbor department's concerned, like Bob said, we are expecting some southeast condition winds coming in with some rain. Depending on what, what you look at, how many knots and how much rain is, anybody guess? They're talking 20 to 30 knots on southeast condition. Southeast really affects the fuel dock, the pump dock, the rescue dock, and the dinghy dock. We have since moved all those and are prepared for the storm coming in. We've made several phone calls yesterday, getting the people out of the corner, back over to the pier, in a little bit calmer water. Those, some, those that are there now chose to stay there, so, but they've been advised about the storm. So we're, we're ready, we're staffed, and it's, hopefully, tomorrow afternoon, we get, start getting some rain, so. Any questions?
Council?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to do this, but Mr. Greenlaw sat down too fast and I didn't get to ask a couple of questions. Can we ask?
Sure, he'll come back up, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Amanda, we're going to, can I, or do you want to do it after, after Amanda?
Let's do, after Amanda.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Council Mayor, I just wanted to introduce John Gilbert. He's our new building official. He's taking Steve Corleao's place, so he'll be here the same three days a week that Steve was. So he's jumped in with both feet and did a good job, so we're really glad to have him here. We wanted to be able to face with the name.
Great.
Welcome, John.
Steve, welcome aboard. John, welcome aboard.
John Gilbert. So really quick, the Zangre is getting close to getting their combination inspections, which is all their mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. They're still working on the exteriors of the building, and they have the excavation done for their new sewer lateral, and they're ready for the pipe installation. Trailhead is moving quickly towards completion. Last week, they passed all their life safety inspections, they're, got permission to stock their retail sales and test their kitchen and bar area equipment. They're expecting to install the remaining stairs and handrail to the observation deck this week, install the photo, photovoltaic system, and the next item on their list is the striping of the parking areas. They expect to be completed by December 18th. Bonds is also swiftly moving towards completion. Last week, they also passed all their life safety inspections and are also being allowed to stock shelves, test cooking equipment, and train personnel. Their front parking area is all cleared of construction debris, and the retaining wall is going in the final grade, and the parking lot is almost completed. The window tenting will be installed on Thursday, 12/6. The exterior lighting is completed, and after speaking with Mac, we plan on testing the light levels Wednesday night, weather permitting. Soundproofing material for the loading dock is on the island, but however, the mounting screws didn't make it, so they should be here by next week, and the installation should take a couple of days for that acoustical panels that are going inside the loading zone. In preparation for the upcoming rain event, they have temporarily extended their roof drainage lines out across the sidewalk so that it doesn't fill in those areas that are still open to the, to the soils. Atwater's at the rough end construction stage on the inside, but they are working diligently on the exterior of the building, I think with the hope to get the exterior finished as soon as possible so they can remove the shroud from the building while they continue to work inside. And then I also wanted to announce next week, on Wednesday, the 12th, we're having three public workshops for our sea level rise study. We've scheduled three individual sessions. The 2:00 P.M. session is hopefully for all of our water-based businesses and activities. Then we'll have a 4:00 P.M. session for all of our land-based businesses and activities, and then we have a 6:00 P.M. session that's open to everyone. So if you can't come to one, please try to come to one of the others, it's here at City Hall in the council chamber.
And, I'm sorry, who's going to make the presentation?
Moffett Nickel will be doing that, the consultant.
And I'm sorry, can you give those times again?
2:00 P.M. for the water-based businesses, 4:00 P.M. for the land-based businesses, and 6:00 P.M. is open to the, to the general public.
But if you couldn't make one, come to whatever one you could.
Yeah, if you're a water-based business and you can't be here at 2:00, then certainly come to one of the other sessions. We're trying to just cover everyone as much as we can.
Very nice.
And any questions?
Questions, Council?
I have one more after Richard.
Yeah, just, I was, we asked about the, the backside of the, the new bonds between there and the golf gardens, the open space on the back. Now, I don't know.
They don't have, I'm sorry.
No, is that, is that the Island Company property, or is that the new bonds property? And what, are they gonna, we didn't know if they were going to fence it off, or what we're going to do, the people were concerned.
They currently don't intend to fence it off.
Okay.
They had, I want to say, a two-foot setback from the property line to the building, so there would retain an open space down there. They don't have any intention to block that off, because that would be part of your fire safety to be able to get down. I don't know from the Island Company if they plan on replacing the golf gardens fence.
So is that just going to be dirt, or they put concrete?
I think it's concrete.
Oh, concrete.
Concrete all the way along that backside.
So they won't get muddy and dirty.
Or landscaping, yeah.
Okay.
I just was wondering if you could help explain a little bit on the Trailhead project, and I don't, the question that was posed to me was that the Trailhead project originally included like a coffee shop and a grab-and-go deli of quick sandwiches or pastries or whatnot. And now, it's, my understanding, it might be a full restaurant with nearly 100 seats, and, so, did all of that already go back through planning and water and all of that? Okay.
That is something, we've reached out to the Conservancy and said, this is what you originally said you were going to be doing, obviously, this is not what you're doing, you need to come back to us and document what you actually are doing so that we can make certain, if they need additional water allocation, then they're going to have to answer that question, and then it also can drive a different finding on their inclusionary housing requirements. So we're, we have a meeting.
And their parking requirements. And.
I'm just going to throw that out there.
No, that's a very good point. So we have a meeting with them Friday, Denise and I do.
Okay, so we're not expecting to see a new restaurant opening sometime this month?
I would, no, I would not, no.
Okay. That's kind of, that, I think that's the question that was being asked of me, is, and I honestly haven't, I just haven't paid close enough attention to the insides of the project to be able to have answered that.
Right. They would have to come back and certify that it's still within the scope of what they were originally approved.
Okay.
Other questions?
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Greenlaw. So just two quick things. The, my recollection is that the Department of Boating and Waterway grant for fixing the South Beach sand situation comes up in February.
That's correct.
Where, where are we in the process? Could we, we need to present them with a plan, correct?
So we have two proposers in that, and they're both very knowledgeable with our harbor, so I want to present those, hopefully, this next time around, so that we can get moving on that, so by, you know, February, we have our grant application due, that we have some meat to put into it. And we do have a lot of basis to put an application together right now, but I'd like to develop that even more environmentally, so that they can see that we're ready to deliver the project at an early date, when they would have the funds available, and that would make us a lot more competitive.
Okay. That, that assuages my concern. I mean, that's exactly, I agree with you, that is what we want to do, is the most complete application, so that we have the, stand the best chance of getting the money. And then you and I have communicated, but if you could share with the public what's happening with the chairlift, that senior, that beekeeper?
Yeah, so we have put together to execute the contract with them, but they seem to be slow in their end of it, trying to execute that contract, and it appears right now that they want out of it, okay?
Oh, God.
But this is a public bid, and that has a bid security with it, and what, they didn't have a bid bond, but they did put in the required $1,500 check, 10% of the, 5% of the bid. So they would lose that, yes. But also, tomorrow, I'm going to get on with their president that's back in Florida, and try to convince them to complete the project, and that, I think the concerns, though, were the ability to do the warranty work. And it's interesting, they, they have other lifts on the island here.
Right.
Is my understanding, and that they're coming out here anyway, but what was shared to me with their staff was that that type of, with that, the circular, not the circular, but with the two, two different angles on it, it has, tends to have a lot more warranty work needed on it. And so they would take them a day, a full day for one service, versus what they were saying, they usually try to hit about six jobs in a day. So really, that, now that's been shared with me, that there's other lifts on the island, maybe that we can get some bang for the buck. But I will have that discussion and share that with you, and hopefully, we'll come out with a positive result. Um, if nothing else, we're at the point, if I can procure just even the product, I mean, we would install it ourselves.
Yeah.
Would we need to get clearance from CDBG?
Yes, we would need to get CDBG.
Could we get that in motion, or just touch base with them?
I'm trying to have that conversation tomorrow.
Okay.
And have everything lined up. Uh, so that, I also don't wanna scare CDBG off at this point, and giving them, you know, some, well, we're going down, and then they, they try to retract the, the funds from us, okay? So, I'm trying to do it in the most positive sense, but I also am trying to do it in a hurry, okay? I know it has been a slow process, especially for the apartment complex, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Baker, speaking on behalf of Finance. I'm happy to report that we received the draft caper for the seventeen financials today. Um, I had a chance to look at it this afternoon, and the numbers seem, appear to be consistent with the fund financials that were presented to us in October. Uh, working with Bob to draft the M D and A Management Discussion Analysis Section with the goal of finalizing the seventeen audit by the end of this month. Right now, we have tentatively scheduled for Davis Far to come out in the second meeting in January to go over those final financials with you. Uh, the second thing I just wanna make a note of is business license renewal. It's that time of the year, so we're gonna be sending out invoices next week. Um, we're also going to be sending out notices this year to, for dog license renewals. So, just a reminder, for those that have dogs, there is a licensing requirement. Um, one thing we are changing with the admissions tax, harbor use tax, and anyone paying a lease that has a percentage of revenue, is we are adding a requirement on the monthly reporting form to indicate the first and last receipt of the period. Um, there will be a letter to those businesses that it's applicable when they get their invoice about the change. Um, and in separate conversations I've had with different members of council, um, I've heard different things, so I welcome any feedback. My approach was going to be to allow a ninety-day window, to allow businesses to comply with the providing of the receipt numbers, beginning and ending. Um, I know this is something that's been discussed in the past, and there's been some discussion of whether that ninety-day notice is necessary, considering notices did go out last year, though ultimately, nothing was done with the receipt number. So, my intent was to allow the ninety-day and put it in effect in April, but if, if council has other input, I welcome that.
Mayor, we've been waiting for years, for this, years.
I know.
I am absolutely not in favor of a ninety-day window. This has been, I mean...
The ninety days we wanted to give them before, so they could use up their inventory on the stuff that they had, and they'd have time to find a printer, to get new receipts, and whatever. So, I don't know, Counsel, what, what's reasonable? I mean, there's business people out here that you might say, "Well, it's gonna take me this long to get, get new receipt books, or get receipt books with numbers on them? How's, how long's that take?" John, you have a business. Two days, okay. Thank you.
Or if you have existing receipts and you wanna use them, and you have an employee sit down and number them by hand, the way that we do the taxi books. I mean, the city council has been discussing this. It can't come as a surprise to any business owner out there.
No, and it was just totally ignored, except by, for one business contacted us, panicked, and it was the only, and the person that had a system in place. And there was no discussion, no, okay, so what do you wanna do?
I would appreciate having this start January first. And we start with a clean year.
With the holidays coming along, you think January first, team?
I don't know wrong with dates, but I do have an issue with beginning and ending numbers every month, because if someone's got a book with fifty receipts in it, they're gonna go through a lot, multiple books in, in a month.
Right.
And if you have something like the Island Company that has multiple tours, then you're gonna have the beginning and ending ticket number for fifteen tours.
No, I think, Ollie, this is really more of a cash basis. If, if you, if you're in a situation like the Island Company, you are, you have a ticket booking system. You have a system that can be audited. You have reporting that can balance to your income statements. This, the numbering in the ticket system had to do with the cash businesses that would just, there was no way to audit those businesses.
So, how are we gonna select which people we're sending letters to to start this procedure?
Everybody that has, that either has admissions, okay, explain it.
Admissions or robberies.
But that's the Island Company, that's the venture tours, that's...
Right, you may still get the letter.
I think the easy thing to do is to refer people to the finance department if they have any questions about their accounting methods and whether they satisfy the requirements. To contact Matt, and Matt can work with our auditors to...
And, and the main goal with the numbers would just provide additional data points. So, when we do hire auditors, we would be able to do more trend analysis to see whether a business had fewer transactions in one month yet reported, or had more transactions in one month yet reported fewer revenues. So, the real, the goal behind having these numbers, it's not gonna catch everything, but what it's going to do is it's gonna give our auditors more data points to use so they can look for outliers in, in reporting, and hopefully, allow us to make better selections when it comes to, to the audit process.
For example, the shoreboat. You know, good examples of shoreboat. Past and present. Well, but, but now they have to have a system. They'll have to have a system. When they, when they sell, if they sell you a book of, to get on and off the shoreboat, those will be numbered books, and they have, they'll have to come up with a system for those people that just go up and pay that five dollars, or whatever it is, when they get on the boat. Gonna have to come up with a system.
And like, like Counsel said, we'll work with businesses to make sure that we can come up with a way to keep track, that makes sense for the business, so.
Okay.
That's all I have, that's all.
'Cause I suspect the Island Company has more systems than anyone.
Oh, yeah. System-rich.
And it would be only those systems that, that, like, on the pier and those kinds of things, you know, so. And their tours and whatever.
Right.
So, thank you, that's it?
Thank you, that's all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, just a few more holiday updates that we've got going on in the community service department. Tomorrow night may be a good day, or maybe not be a good day, to go to Steve's Steakhouse. Always a good day to go to Steve's Steakhouse. But our teen centers be taking twenty-five of their teens in the program out for a holiday event there at five o'clock. So, either come along and sit beside us, or come through about six-thirty when we've cleared out to be on the safe side. But since our last update a month ago, not specifically, but we've been looking to target more females in the program, and we're starting to see that. They had thirty-five, um, on Friday, thirty-five participants in the teen program. And so, it seems to be growing at a, at a rapid rate. And this is just another fun thing they'll be doing in the month of December. Um, recital, we have a recital, our dance and tumbling holiday recital is this Saturday at two o'clock at the casino. It's just gonna precede the museums event that they've got at four o'clock. Community garden is starting to make some motion. Uh, we just handed over a key and access to the area. It'd be one of the, the bungalow that the city owns. Uh, the patio there will be used for community garden. Micah Phillips is taking the lead on that project, and you can either reach me or reach out to him if you want to be more involved in that. Um, on the twentieth of December, we will be doing our second round of holiday food baskets. Uh, looking to do forty to forty-five. If you know anybody that may be interested or in need of a holiday gift basket, um, it'll include a ham, it'll include all the fixings and dessert. Uh, please reach out to the community service department, see if we can get them on the list. And then, on the first, and I haven't rehearsed this with the mayor, uh, our polar bear swim. Our polar bear swim, we'll do a swim on the first at seven-thirty at the casino. It's about a mile swim. And then if you just wanna plunge with us, hopefully, Val will be back and, and in the water as well. Uh, at eleven-thirty, we'll do our polar plunge off of Meadow Beach. That was it, and thank you, happy holidays to you.
The concert's at two PM?
Yes.
On Saturday, the concert?
This is the dancer recital, tumbling dancer recital, that's at two PM. And then the concert is at four PM.
Okay. Well, great. All the department heads are done, okay. Oral communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You'll be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Time out? Are you gonna let the council report?
Oh, Jay, yeah, he came, he came. They're getting ready for the storm.
What if it be a mess? Oh, you guys.
Oh, hey.
Skip us, Annie?
I'm lost.
Oh, well, dang, we were doing darn. I was trying to make up for lost time, but okay. So, well, we can still have oral communications and then go back to council.
That's true.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's do that, since people... Mike, you have something you wanna say? Come on in.
Good evening, council members, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. A couple weeks ago, I was up in Northern California, attending a memorial service, and a cousin of mine is in the city government up there, and there were a couple city managers around. And, you know, after we were having a little, uh, little meal sitting around, one of them asked me about a posting for assistant city manager in Avalon. And they were kinda confused because they heard through this group that our city manager, David Jenkins, was no longer here. And they had some questions for me about it, but I, I mentioned that, I assumed that the, uh, city clerk was doing the city manager's job temporarily, and that I'd find out about it. But anyhow, I'm, I'm just asking around town, are we now combined with a city clerk, city manager, in one package? Is it structurally set at that, or is it temporary, or...
Yes, my position is city clerk and city manager.
Okay, and so we're gonna hire...
At the May two thousand eighteen meeting, the council unanimously appointed me for that.
Say again?
In the May two thousand eighteen city council meeting, the city council unanimously appointed me.
Okay, I didn't realize it was hardwired. I didn't catch that in the meeting, I apologize. But can I ask, because transparent California, the last pay, total pay and benefits package they have for you is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-seven, annual rate, that's, you know, benefits and, and pay. Can I ask now what the total annual income for you will be with pay and benefits holding both jobs?
I do not currently have an existing contract for this position yet. I have been waiting to get through all our negotiations with my five associations. They were more important than my contract, so I do not have a, an existing contract.
Can you...
I cannot give you a number right now.
Can you give me what you, what would you like to have? What, what do you expect?
My contract...
I'm sorry.
This is, this is city business, I mean, we, we do pay taxes here.
I understand that, but that, but the negotiation for the city manager's contract is in our purview.
Okay, it's just, it's an unusual circumstance. That was pointed out to me at this memorial service, you know, that they were familiar with the David Jenkins situation, and it just, the way it was being done, being combined, that, that confused them.
Uh, Mr. Sheehan?
But, you know, just if I could just finish your, item number nine.
I could tell you that when I've gone to the city manager's contract, uh, conference last February, they most definitely have a lot of combined, um...
Positions.
Positions, thank you.
Okay, and that leads to my next point, which is quick. But, uh, item number nine, basically, I mean, the city manager has to be very sensitive to the business needs in the community. And, uh, item number nine clearly shows that the understanding of, because you did write item number nine, but they understand the business needs of the community and just, you know, arbitrarily suggesting that we add fees, you know, for mooring and work. We'll have a discussion with that about, when item nine comes up, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and we can clarify, and it's actually number eight, I think you're talking about?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
There is no number nine.
No.
No, it's item number...
Item number eight.
Allison Osensky, three fifty-six, Sumner. I have quite a bit later in the, uh, meeting, but a couple things quick in the three minutes here. Uh, for Edison, where's our two-million-gallon water tank? What's going on with that? And is there even desal plant number three in the design phase? I mean, we're not gonna put up with this forever. We gotta do something about it. We're an island surrounded by water. We need a new desal plant. Uh, next item, the aquatic complex. What has the city been doing recently to secure land for construction of an aquatic complex and recreation center? And has anyone yet met with L.A. County representatives about building and paying for the Pool Rec Center? We're part of L.A. County, as I've pointed out numerous times, we pay more than our fair share of taxes. Right now, there are thirty-three communities and sixty-three large aquatic complexes in L.A. County. We don't have one of them, and I think we deserve one. Has anybody met with them to discuss this issue? This is one of the ways to possibly pay for the center. I think L.A. County needs to look at this. They've got sixty-three pools. In addition, there are numerous city and other large social service agency pools. And as of last count, new study just done, there are forty-three-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-three residential pools in L.A. County. We have nothing here. So, could somebody please follow up on that? Third, third comment that I wanna bring up today is, Annie, we've talked about this numerous times, about developing a harbor oversight committee. I think now's the time to do that, when you're discussing raising fees. Uh, we need representatives that represent the interests of boaters in this community and to provide some input. I'd like to see a harbor oversight committee composed of boat owners, local boat owners, guest boaters, mooring owners, business owners who work in the harbor and live aboard. Uh, you know, you snuck in those no-winner rates, which personally is gonna cost me thousands of dollars that somehow none of the boaters heard about, and now you're trying to raise rates again, and there's a lot of concern about this. The city has gotten very greedy about the harbor. They provide very poor service to boaters and nearly no amenities. We have a very boater-unfriendly environment. According to recent report that the city had done, directly or indirectly from moorings, fourteen million dollars of gear comes into the city from the harbor. Of the hundred-and-sixty million, that's their total visitor revenue, that's eleven-and-a-half percent of all the revenues to the city are from the boaters in the harbor. Could we please look into this? And again, I'd, again, recommend that you send somebody to someplace where they have good customer service. I'd highly recommend the New York State Erie Canal Corporation as a good example of good boater service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Adeline Young with Southern California, Edison. Um, you may have seen this gentleman that I'm gonna introduce around town. Um, he is Terry Maddox. He is the principal manager of Generations for Eastern Operations, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, you meet him officially.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council and staff. I'm delighted to be here and to meet you tonight. About a year and a half ago, Edison restructured our business units on Catalina Island, Catalina Gas, Catalina Water, and Pedley Beach Generating Station units to more tightly integrate the island operations with expertise on the mainland. And I've been listening intently to some of the commentary tonight, and appreciate the feedback that we're receiving. We have some longstanding chronic issues that we need to solve working together in the future. And our restructuring that's taken place last year is with the intention to engage subject matter expertise on the mainland, to, to more effectively engage those subject matter experts with problem-solving specific to Catalina, so we can begin to implement some long-term solutions and get some of these chronic issues put behind us going ahead. So, I'm delighted to be newly affiliated with Catalina Island and looking forward to a successful partnership for many years going forward. Thank you, and happy holidays.
And welcome aboard. I know we're all anxious to hear about Prop One, and that just keeps, because that will dictate some of the direction, I think, and help you make decisions one way or the other. But there's no, no movement on Prop One? No? Okay, all right, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Hello, Kathleen Carlisle, three-eleven East Whitley. I just wanna say, um, that when I talked to the building inspector when the Vons project started and they were doing the grading, I looked and I saw that they weren't doing anything about any sort of drainage underground. And I think Brian, was that the man that left a couple terms ago? Okay, so, he and I talked, and I said, you know, when all this went down for approval, we came up and we said, "This is a floodplain." Obviously, the county agreed because they told them, "It's a floodplain. You have to build your store three or four feet higher," whatever it is. So, they agreed, yes, it's a floodplain. So, we were con... So we were concerned about the impact to our properties surrounding the store when you're taking an area that was dirt, where the water used to run down eucalyptus, run across the dirt and into the mini golf, and now it's covered with concrete and building. So this is something we brought up in writing and at the podium here during the approval process. So when I talked to Brian onsite, I said, I thought that they had to build some sort of underwater or underground cistern that then collected the water and slowly fed it into the sewer system on a safe level so that the sewer system could handle it. And he said, yes, that's county law, basically, of any project like this that goes into a floodplain. And I said, yes, but we've checked the plans and it's not in the plans, but we brought it up. And he said, well, it doesn't matter if it's not in the plans, it's the county law. Well, then he left. So the grading kept going, nothing ever happened. And I was really surprised seeing the gutters in the sidewalk go in the other day, showing that the water from that roof is going to run right down the side of the building, under the sidewalk and into the street on all sides. So I was a little shocked. And it's going to rain Wednesday, Thursday, and I would really like your building people to go down there and look at the impact. And if there's something we need to do about it further, if that could be done, that'd be great.
Thank you, I think Bob made a note.
Good evening, council. Gail Fornesier, one oh six Olive, and also Director of Marketing for the Catalina Island Museum, which is why I'm here. Just wanted to say this Saturday, piggybacking on what Dan said, the museum's having their holiday season celebration at the Avalon Casino Theater. It's a one-time-only combination of our First Friday into our Saturday holiday season celebration. So one night only Saturday, no First Friday. And it's going to be, we're showing A Christmas Story in the Avalon Theater, which will be super fun. But previous to that will be some local kids with Chris Breeze singing some carols. And food is included in the ticket. It's a movie-themed snack compared with the theme of The Christmas Story. And there's, Santa will be there. Santa will be giving gifts to everybody. And also we'll have wine and beer will be available via the island company for purchase at the, during the movie and prior. And there's also a raffle, and maybe one of you could go home with the famous leg lamp from the movie. So please come and join us on Saturday, four to seven P M. at the Avalon Theater. Thanks.
And the, and the ticket prices are?
Twenty for members, twenty-five for non, and ten dollars for kids.
Okay, thank you. Annie? You're going to have to race Paul to get up here.
Good evening, council. I just, Janie Hall from three thirty-four Clarissa. I just had a couple of follow-up points that were gleaned from public comments from my letter on the cruise ships last week, or last week's Islander. And the first one would be the, to somehow rewrite the contract, redo the subsidy, the incentive net, whatever you want to call it. But as it comes out in hard numbers, it's two hundred thousand dollars that is rebated to the present cruise line, which is Carnival. So if that can be a new, like when Cindy reported from the conference, there seemed to be other lines interested or other possibilities. It's, I know it's, it's about having two boats, two days. So if we could just look into that, I really think this is more of a, should have more council input rather than chamber, that the chamber does not really, it isn't re, an outreach to the whole community. It's kind of the members. And that's another, my second point, which would be the scheduling of the ships. There, everybody has gotten used to Monday and Tuesday. They seem to be good with that. It's when it falls on a Saturday, Sunday, in the middle of summer, and then it's not really spread out very well, then that's when I think there's, people have more problem with it. And especially when it falls on the Fourth of July Saturday or that day of the parade. I mean, it's one thing to come for fireworks at night, but not get off the boat. That is, that is overtourism. And so I, I hope that the city can possibly make a hard, fast rule about keeping the ships Monday, Tuesday.
Let me just do two moments of clarification. One, I did not report that there were other cruise ships interested in coming to Catalina now. That was one of our goals, was to make sure that Catalina was on the forefront of other cruise lines, such as Princess and Royal Caribbean, not all of which have west coast sailings at this time. However, the intention was not to, to look for new cruise ships coming on a weekly basis. It was to say, hey, if Carnival ever left, you know, we, we have a port that would be available. So those relationships need to be formed over time. And that's what, what our, one of our main goals was, was to establish those relationships and say, we're, we're here. Second to that, I did report that there is interest in Catalina being a day trip. So, for example, we spoke to many cruise lines that would never think about coming to Catalina as a port. But for us to be able to, to offer Catalina as a possible day trip. So perhaps, you know, in some of these higher-end cruise ships that have six hundred persons that are stopping in L.A. for the day, you know, they could take the helicopter over and they could do an interior educational tour of the island. They could come and spend the day at Descanso Beach, knowing that they're not going to be at any other beach along the west coast during their trip. So I, I just, I want to be very clear, because I think sometimes when letters are written, they don't always include all of the appropriate information. And then as far as, just because I have the knowledge, the, the city council did make the decision at, and I'm not sure the date, and I, I won't even venture to say when that was. But the, the city council was very much involved in the decision to do that marketing fee that was returned to the cruise ships. So that was not something that was done behind closed doors. It was not something that the chamber negotiated. That was something that the city council negotiated. And it's considered a marketing fee. And right or wrong, that it may need to come back for a conversation or whatnot, but, but that was the lure that got them to bring a second ship for a second day in the week. It's not, it, it was part of the agreement in order for them to come a second day. So it's, it is, was a, a marketing fee, and I, you know?
But it wasn't one time, and it doesn't have a sunset. And so that's the, I have a problem with it. I mean, it's a fair amount of money, and you're looking at two floats that cost two hundred thousand dollars that the cruise ships would use. So that's, I think, that's, and I understand that it was done at a time at the Great Recession, when this town was having a lot of issues, folding in the wintertime, et cetera. So that you, it was realistic at that time. But now I don't think it's the same economy. So I think we could look, re-look at it and, you know, just.
Is that something that could be re-looked at when this, because it's a five-year contract, right?
No, it's a, it's in the municipal code.
Oh, it's?
The section is in the municipal code.
Oh, okay.
It gives that, gives that, that reduced rate for, and additional ships. So the way to do that, council would have to amend the municipal code.
Okay.
What that would be a suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Yoli, if you want to speak, come up to the, if you want to speak, come up to the podium. Wait, if you want to speak, come up to the podium, please, thank you.
I just wanted to let Janie know.
Okay, get up to the podium.
Once you're there. I just wanted to let Janie know, the chamber doesn't control the schedule for the extra cruise ships. And I believe the city and the harbor have to approve if they come in on a certain day or not extra. You know, we, they don't, it's not the chamber and the business communicating with the cruise ship, saying, oh, come an extra day on a Saturday, come an extra day on Fourth of July. It all is approved at the harbor department and the city, so they are fully aware.
I understand the harbor does it for safety purposes.
Right, so they'll make that decision. He, he'll, they're qualified to make the decision whether the harbor can withstand that impact or if they can get off on the tenders and the float. So I just wanted to let you know, it's not chamber controlling the cruise ships.
And also, there's a, a lot of the repositioning ships that come in. I, I mean, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have dates all the way into twenty twenty of repositioning ships that will be coming to Avalon. So it's not just a, oh, we wake up Saturday morning and boom, there's a cruise ship here. We know. We, we know in some cases a year or two in advance that they've scheduled Catalina. The chamber also does communicate to the community through their Thursday update that said, hey, here's the additional sailings we have in the next six months. And that goes for weeks at a time in the, in the Thursday update. So I, the difficulty that I have, Janie, is that there are, you know, there is an impact if we were to have five cruise ships a week that were here. That's a huge impact on a weekly basis to this community. I, I hear that. But I also hear from the droves of business owners that come and say, hey, that influx of cash that I got today for being able to pay for my employees over the winter months that can barely make ends meet, that's a huge benefit to a lot of people. And for a lot of business owners, they rely upon that extra little push that one day this month, we got an extra cruise ship to help cover the cost of keeping people here. If you don't provide full-time employment for people during the winter, our employees cannot pay their rent and therefore cannot stay and live in this community. And there's not even enough work in the wintertime, for example, for people to go out and get two and three jobs. The restaurants are closing at six, seven, eight o'clock at night in some cases. And so that, that's where my heart is, is how do we, how do we maintain what we need to do as a community? How do we keep people living in this community? How do we make it so people can pay their bills? But how do we also make this a great place to live? I mean, there has to be a balance. So just, you know, telling people, no, we don't want you to come on a Saturday because it's a Saturday and we want to rest, that's hard. That's hard to answer to.
Do we get the three-minute timer?
I'll very, I'll be brief, just to reassert everything that's just been said by, by Cindy and Yoli is accurate to the best of my knowledge. The, the one exception would be, and again, this is a harbor department call, if there's a weather-related relocation where a ship can't go into another port, that comes about with very short notice. We do our best to notify the community, but don't shoot the messenger. Just because we're putting it out there doesn't mean we made the decision to, to have that ship come. It's made based on the capacity of our harbor.
Right, thank you. One other item, or is this something we're going to have to put on the agenda for additional discussion?
Yes. I'm not saying that they're not a great thing in the wintertime. I'm just, that's an, been accepted by, I think, all of the population. But you can't say, whether or not you're selling T-shirts or golf carts or whatever, that a cruise ship dropping two thousand people in an hour doesn't affect everything. It affects the quality of life of this community. It affects people, whether people want to leave their house. And whether or not they're, they find it a livable resort or want to come back. You know, you just have to check TripAdvisor for some of that because you're also losing people that are, you know, overcrowded on cruise ship days, especially on weekends.
Thank you for your input. Okay, Paul, on a lighter note.
Hello there, I'm Paul Burchell, librarian, Avalon Library. Just wanted to do a very quick mention. We will be closed tomorrow. All county offices are closed tomorrow because of the George Bush memorial. I wanted to talk very, very briefly about the refurb. We're close to signing, I think, the lease on our temporary library. So the closing of the main library is going to happen probably very soon. Not sure when, but it's coming. When it happens, the express library will, will be available for all library services. We're going to have new books on display. It'll be a place where you can renew your books, check books out. The best use of the library, I think, will be for you to order books, maybe online at home. We'll have them delivered to the express library, you come and pick them up.
Wow.
I'm also have my fingers crossed that I'm actually going to have an area in there with some tables and a couple of public computers. It's, there are a couple of drafts I've seen of what the express library is going to look like, we'll see. But I want, you know, to have an area for the kids to go after school if, if at all possible. But again, time will tell, but it's going to happen pretty soon. I just want to say that it's, it's coming up. Other than that, this week, I'm emptying my art closet. So everybody, kids, adults, whatever, come on by. I've got like paper crowns, I've got little masks, I've got glitter glue. Man, do I have glitter glue. Come on down, come on down and enjoy your library.
So I guess you're not at liberty to tell us where the express library will be until the lease is signed?
I'd rather not at this time.
Okay, that's okay. We're excited to?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be actually a difficult few months, I think. But after that, I've seen the.